All right. Calling to order is the by me, Duncan Lake, 0676, Tuesday, August 22nd. Go all please.
Field?
Here.
Help? Here. Castor here. Andella?
Here.
Walker?
Here.
Please rise. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which has been established, one nation under thy, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. At this time we open up the floor for any public comments or agenda discussions. We have any public comments? Okay, I now turn the floor over to Ms. Tenny.
Thank you. Our presentation tonight is the introduction of our new staff. We hired 28 new staff members and two, actually total of 30, two of our staff members transferred internally to the center of 30 new people in new positions and some of your staff that we invited to meet all of you. We shared with them that we had a institute day within this decade, we didn't proceed with them on their sentence today about what a wonderful voice we see as a support and inspiration team, come your vision and your support, construction and path to forward. So we're excited about the new staff. I have Pringles. Thank you. Let's start with Dr. Frye, Dr. Perry.
Hi.
Introducing. Thank you. We are so excited about so many new faces at Perry's School. We have Vera, who has asked. Oh, no, no. Hi. She is our new social worker. We have Alejandra, Sarah Plango. She is one of our first grade dual language teachers and her partner in crime, Cindy Gomez, is another first grade dual language teacher. Inez, Tiara, who's not joining us this evening, but she moved from Duncan Lake over to Perry Haven, so she's new with us right now. Right is our speech and language teacher who's going to be primarily focusing on our kindergarten and first grade students while our other speech and language pathologist focuses on our early childhood preschool students. We have Sarah Q, who is a first grade teacher. We have Princess Hani Malador, she is our early childhood teacher, so she's got our little, little guys. Candace Restrelly is a kindergarten teacher joining us this year. Evelyn Saran also doesn't look like she was able to join us this evening, but she is our P L resource teacher and we are fortunate enough to take on a C D O as this year part time early childhood. So, Ailey Logan is our C D O preschool teacher. She was unable to be here this evening. So, welcome to all of you.
At Duncan Lake we have a whole third grade team almost, so I will introduce them first. Actually, I'll be back about introduce fourth grade first because Mary Badlani and Sarah tonight, she is the second half of our new learning which core third, we're taking a team teaching approach on that tonight. Our new third grade features, we got Paola Antara and I'm not saying she's fancy as she does, and Sally Alonar, our new third grade of learning which teachers, they were on the be here tonight, which I'm surprised since we're usually still in the building this time. Julie Brown is one of our new learning associates and just today we also run out our final learning associate on Mr. John Hoffman, many of you may know him because he's been a southern district for a long time. Kristian Finland is the third grade janitor teacher. And we have Kate Galanowski, who is our speech and language, she's point four, she's with us two days a week. And then Samira Calerone is our new, I want to get it right, title of the administrative associate. So, she's up front, she took Inez's place. She is, her and Eric are products called Duncan Lake School Hall and Buildings and now they're back with us, so we're pretty excited.
So, we're excited to have our West Oak to have great reports to both the office and sharing C D O and new hires. So, first I'd like to say that Tracy Q is our assistant principal and also she is language program coordinator for the district. So, we're excited to have Tracy here. And now to be out of one Tracy, I have that too. So, I have Tracy Zeman working at West Oak for us as well, he's a great project chief in the district for three years, and our student service, our group services coordinator and assessment coordinator. Both of these ladies have split responsibilities of the at West Oak and then about a third 25% of their job responsibilities also focus on supporting the district, language programs and the assessment programs. So, we're very fortunate to have her here at West Oak and in the district. I'm going to rename some of them on here, but there's a nice grouping of our new teachers and I welcome that. We have two people whose names didn't get on the list originally, first called Mary Crease. We have Erica Bauder who joined us at this grade level, and he's teaching specialized in poetry. And we have Alison Verantini, she's joining us in Spanish foreign language. We're excited to have her join us. And down with action, it's not Sharon Susan Borkowski, that's my mistake, but Susan Borkowski is a Japanese choir instructor, she's dynamite, lots of fun, fits perfectly in with our music department. Like to also, she's here, Diana Enriquez, joining us sixth grade dual language. We're very excited to be working on how that program expands, Diane is going to be a key component and major player in that. We are sharing with C D O, we have Mary Badpukin and Paul Olson from C D O, who are not here tonight, but we have a C D O program class here at West Oak, four students are the name. We're excited to have them here. Stephen Alday is key intervention. Tom Short is here, Tom is there. Tom is our instructional technology media specialist. We have Kimmy Stow in second grade there. Nicole Alivia is speech language pathologist, not just at West Oak, but throughout, she's housed at West Oak. And then most recently, it's a great pleasure, Erica Lab is joining us and she's doing that intervention and some special support as well, and we're so excited to have Erica on this. Welcome everybody to the district and to West Oak, thank you.
So, at this time we're going to take a break, so we think our new employees are staff. We've been waiting for you. And there's Tracy and Laura. Thank you. And here's the first one. Thank you. And there's Tracy and Laura. Thank you. And here's the first one. Thank you. And there's Tracy and Laura. Thank you. And here's the first one. Thank you. And there's Tracy and Laura. Thank you. And here's the first one. Thank you. And there's Tracy and Laura. Thank you. And here's the first one. Thank you. And there's Tracy and Laura. Thank you. And here's the first one. Thank you. And there's Tracy and Laura. Thank you. And here's the first one. Thank you. And there's Tracy and Laura. Thank you. And here's the first one. Thank you. And there's Tracy and Laura. Thank you. And here's the first one. Thank you. And there's Tracy and Laura. Thank you. And here's the first one. Thank you. And there's Tracy and Laura. Thank you. And here's the first one. Thank you. And there's Tracy and Laura. Thank you. And here's the first one. Thank you. And there's Tracy and Laura. Thank you. And here's the first one. Thank you. And there's Tracy and Laura. Thank you. And here's the first one. Thank you. And there's Tracy and Laura. Thank you. And here's the first one. Thank you. And there's Tracy and Laura. Thank you. And here's the first one. Thank you. And there's Tracy and Laura. Thank you. And here's the first one. Thank you. And there's Tracy and Laura. Thank you. And here's the first one. Thank you. And there's Tracy and Laura. Thank you. And here's the first one. Thank you. And there's Tracy and Laura. Thank you. And here's the first one. Thank you. And there's Tracy and Laura. Thank you. And here's the first one. Thank you. And there's Tracy and Laura. Thank you. And here's the first one. Thank you. And there's Tracy and Laura. Thank you. And here's the first one. Thank you. And there's Tracy and Laura. Thank you. And here's the first one. Thank you. And there's Tracy and Laura. Thank you. And here's the first one. Thank you. And there's Tracy and Laura. Thank you. And here's the first one. Thank you. And there's Tracy and Laura. Thank you. And here's the first one. Thank you. And there's Tracy and Laura. Thank you. And here's the first one. Thank you. And there's Tracy and Laura. Thank you. And here's the first one. Thank you. And there's Tracy and Laura. Thank you. And here's the first one. Thank you. And there's Tracy and Laura. Thank you. And here's the first one. Thank you. And there's Tracy and Laura. Thank you. And here's the first one. Thank you. And there's Tracy and Laura. Thank you. And here's the first one. Thank you. And there's Tracy and Laura. Thank you. And here's the first one. Thank you. And there's Tracy and Laura. Thank you. And here's the first one. Thank you. And there's Tracy and Laura. Thank you. And here's the first one. Thank you. And there's Tracy and Laura. Thank you. And here's the first one. Thank you. And there's Tracy and Laura. Thank you. And here's the first one. Thank you. And there's Tracy and Laura. Thank you. And here's the first one. Thank you. And there's Tracy and Laura. Thank you. And here's the first one. Thank you. And there's Tracy and Laura. Thank you. And here's the first one. Thank you. And there's Tracy and Laura. Thank you. And here's the first one. Thank you. And there's Tracy and Laura. Thank you. And here's the first one. Thank you. And there's Tracy and Laura. Thank you. And here's the first one. Thank you. And there's Tracy and Laura. Thank you. And here's the first one. Thank you. And there's Tracy and Laura. Thank you. And here's the first one. Thank you. And there's Tracy and Laura. Thank you. And here's the first one. Thank you. And there's Tracy and Laura. Thank you. And here's the first one. Thank you. And there's Tracy and Laura. Thank you. And here's the first one. Thank you. And there's Tracy and Laura. Thank you. And here's the first one. Thank you. And there's Tracy and Laura. Thank you. And here's the first one. Thank you. And there's Tracy and Laura. Thank you. And here's the first one. Thank you. And there's Tracy and Laura. Thank you. And here's the first one. Thank you. And there's Tracy and Laura. Thank you. And here's the first one. Thank you. And there's Tracy and Laura. Thank you. And here's the first one. Thank you. And there's Tracy and Laura. Thank you. And here's the first one. Thank you. And there's Tracy and Laura. Thank you. And here's the first one. Thank you. And there's Tracy and Laura. Thank you. And here's the first one. Thank you. And there's Tracy and Laura. Thank you. And here's the first one. Thank you. And there's Tracy and Laura. Thank you. And here's the first one. Thank you. And there's Tracy and Laura. Thank you. And here's the first one. Thank you. And there's Tracy and Laura. Thank you. And here's the first one. Thank you. And there's Tracy and Laura. Thank you. And here's the first one. Thank you. And there's Tracy and Laura. Thank you. And here's the first one. Thank you. And there's Tracy and Laura. Thank you. And here's the first one. Thank you. And there's Tracy and Laura. Thank you. And here's the first one. Thank you. And there's Tracy and Laura. Thank you. And here's the first one. Thank you. And there's Tracy and Laura. Thank you. And here's the first one. Thank you. And there's Tracy and Laura. Thank you. And here's the first one. Thank you. And there's Tracy and Laura. Thank you. And here's the first one. Thank you. And there's Tracy and Laura. Thank you. And here's the first one. Thank you. And there's Tracy and Laura. Thank you. And here's the first one. Thank you. And there's Tracy and Laura. Thank you. And here's the first one. Thank you. And there's Tracy and Laura. Thank you. And here's the first one. Thank you. And there's Tracy and Laura. Thank you. And here's the first one. Thank you. And there's Tracy and Laura. Thank you. And here's the first one. Thank you. And there's Tracy and Laura. Thank you. And here's the first one. Thank you. And there's Tracy and Laura. Thank you. And here's the first one. Thank you. And there's Tracy and Laura. Thank you. And here's the first one. Thank you. And there's Tracy and Laura. Thank you. And here's the first one. Thank you. And there's Tracy and Laura. Thank you. And here's the first one. Thank you. And there's Tracy and Laura. Thank you. And here's the first one.[974.12]
The items in this session and the items that are also more action. The first item left is the Omniscope Agenda. I understand the Omniscope Agenda is considered to be an important controversial and will be approved by the motion. If any of your members, staff, administration, or assistants have set a vote on any item in question, that I would have to withhold from the Omniscope Agenda voting separately. Do you resolve that I'm licensed by the Department of Education, such as the Omniscope Agenda, that any item has lifted? Do you think you have comments or questions on this item? Any other questions?
Yes sir, yes. No? Yes. You know? Yes. Help? Yes. Water? Yes. Yeah.
Next item left has to do with some of our facilities investment. Do you resolve that like the Department of Education approves the low total bid and the amount of $97,000 for door access and full modifications at all schools and staff exist? Comments or questions on this item?
Is it common for there to be only one company that's in this business?
Is it common for there to be only one company that's in this business? Well, it's common not to have many for this sort of thing because it's proprietary. But there were three, three people, three companies that could have been at one level here but did not. So it's not a common thing to have two, but it's disappointing to not have one. And we did the air conditioning good early. We had nine dinners. So that's what we like to see. This sort of work is hard to get that because it tends to be proprietary.
So can you describe what kind of change we need initially if you require staff with a new door access control?
I think the problem would talk about how staff would leave, but basically what happened is that the sequence, this, this board proves that the components of the system will be installed pretty likely without anybody. The central system will be installed. People won't really be aware of that. Then at some point, people will be given activated cards that will fit them in. And as systems put in, probably in one day, all the, all the locks will become in effect operable and cars will be, will be active. Nobody really will be locked up. This is transition from keys to knobs that'll be worked out in a way that they're really going to be ready to go one day and it'll be turned over and the staff will be notified.
I think how we've been updating our staff as we're doing this summer, principals, you know, I sent out something about the facility and things and then this game updates and there are completely communication tests to how specifically their little infrastructure changes or changes are active. And well, then any public who is, we feel, is required to sit down once the problems are solved as a tradition to figure out what's the best timeline to come up with and direct communications with staff and help. But it's going to happen on one day, thirty, that networking and pods and then just have extra staff on hand that they can just to handle any problems and damage those problems. But I think we're going to come with one systematic radiation plan as well as a timeline of implementing this. We didn't come up yet with a project. Of course, we'll sit down Thursday, we'll have construction, we need to figure out the timeline, good install.
And we can provide a word with very more detailed explanation exactly how it would be, but on one day per day, the lock should become inactive. Anybody's exterior door key will not work any further. And basically, we're controlling the exterior doors of the district that are used to go in and out. So I've met all the principals that we identified with doors that were, that are contained in that. So these are doors that students and staff typically go in and out to live together. And on one day per day, the lock will be inactive and the old hardware will still perform and the keys will work. And on the next day, anybody that had an interior key, it would no longer work and you would need a card and you wouldn't be able to open it.
Will parents or students see the differences with this or that system?
Will parents use this? It's really just going to be a small little, you know, box that mechanism that they're going to be asking, you know. There's a couple of mechanisms that use this RFID, the ID type card reader. So the plan is right now, from an operational standpoint, is to have staff cards, use the RFID reader, print a staff ID badge everywhere that's being in and out of the building. And since we had keys that have been floating around for several years for the exterior doors, all the exterior door key and only, you know, one or two extra keys were worn for that, which is the administration role. So the staff might get a key card in and out of the building, but they'll still keep their old existing keys that they currently have because those have our warrants. So they lock it, it opens up. That's definitely a part of this.
If you want, let's say for example, you go substitute teachers and you would be able to, somebody would have to work out a way of maybe part of the, certainly to incorporate whatever you need, get their data and hand them the card so that they could use it. But the nature of the system, say you could program that, you could say, okay, Seymour, you have a card, but it's only good Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday from seven to morning to noon. And for everybody, you can prescribe their use or allow them to be used fully at any time. And so you have that data on everybody with this, let's say, a record of, if anybody was in and out of the building.
Would you be able to do a lockdown in a central location to say every door is locked, the keys are operated? You know, security.
Siri, upon a school where I work at, they taught every classroom and a whole building around. But you would have to quit on, you know, every particular door. But typically the doors, the schools are locked. They are locked. So you have to buzz in. So there's, there's control of it. And we're also putting contact, door contacts on. So there would be an alarm, for example, who's going to note the alarm test we worked out. They'll say, doors, if there are doors on clothes. So we'll have this, depending on, you know, how it's set up in this, we'd be able to say, you know, somebody left, the door number six down the corridor is open, somebody put a brick there or something. And, you know, maybe that was a gym teacher or something, they'll fit it or find a bed. This wants to let somebody in. And, you know, there's, you do have that information, questions, we try to get our staff in front, but we do have that information.
Any questions? Okay, I have another question. There's no future expense for this, right? This is a one-time?
There's no.
Future expense? This is a one-time $97,000 monetary expense for maintenance?
No, there's no, I don't believe this is an annual update fee 2014 for this. This is really just hardware. We buy this, we have licenses and so on. So we have down to common licenses if we want to buy on the usage of that. So some of the work with technology apart, you know, the one central interface where all the, all the controls are set up. So yeah, there's no annual fee for services.
And typically, Anderson and I work with them, they look at this very picture, everything works. If something fails, they will take it as part of warranty and fix it. Very good. Anderson Mark is well-known in the school community throughout.
All right, any other questions?
You know?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Help?
Yes.
Yes sir, yes. Candela?
Yes.
Water?
Yes.
Next item has to do with here's related to the period. They resolve that in this school, the District 76 Department of Education approves the resolution authorizing superintendent and mortgage financing operations to approve inside any high pressure documents related to expenditures of emergency funds to address the period at moment who is school to store damage. Comments or questions on this item? Can you guys play kind of a scope of this? It's kind of open ended, are there any comments around it or is this intentions of boxes for it?
Well, the real purpose is right behind the back of the console to do whatever needs to be done in the school. So if we found, for instance, we had asbestos on the floor, we could have a building, asbestos hot water, it's an emergency thing that needs to be done. So it really just gave the administration latitude to approve it, sort of emergency repairs, and if it's done without going forward and really bypassing the requirements. So we had a lot of, we were expecting asbestos that had to be done and short timeframe, asbestos thing. So rather than going and flapping several bits for that, we had a couple of vendors, we need to keep this space out so we can get the building. So really, it gives latitude for us to do our true roles, projects to be undone due to the emergency situation.
But I remember that more decisions to make or how we operate.
This was really supposed to be included in the last meeting. Since we got, kept it on there, just in case there are other dangers that we find, for instance, we walk through the insurance, we also, a lot of people were assessing the potential mold issues or walls. So they've done their analysis of that. So there is stuff, we're trying to find public dangers associated with water. This would give us a flexibility to get that work done on the emergency. So we all, this will figure out a lot of other emergency needs. It's really, it's kind of fact of the fact that we did a lot of the necessary work. But we didn't have a lot of, as much as expensive as possible. Some of it was about, we'd be put in there and that all that we thought it would work in five hundred thousand hours. We've done all the underlying damages, which we didn't see. So thankfully we didn't realize much of what we thought.
So I think that sounds a bit like backing back into a normal mode if you drive on the time out of this kind of lab, there is maintenance. I mean, you might find other things, but it seems like you would bring that to us.
And more toward the right end of the wall. If some other situations came up, this was not a fire situation.
I'd say that may be, this is the title, and I would say no, because of that, because I don't, I don't agree with having the party on, because then it could be, maybe, you know, you guys are trustworthy, you're going to visit, but if it's part of lunch, it's out there, you know, for the, the word administrative group, we may be, you know, not here. Some of that history may go, you know, I'm working through that kind of thing where there's whole new staff and client and they have no history of lies and the subject is not worth it. So that was, I mean, I'd say no, but I thought it was open ended. At this point, the work was done. And I, you know, mostly spoke on everybody, I'm not in favor of puns of this work, very, that is, the, you know, what it means in order to make the safety of the children and who's had. But beyond that, and, you know, I'm not into the production.
I also agree, doesn't have any going for it. So I would be excited for more.
One of the things that I would say that we respect the standards, because I'm sure it's a lot of things that were done in this way, the things that, I mean, we had to get done immediately. But I just wanted to point out, there is more damage in the school. And I think, I'm speaking for myself, my understanding that, especially the work done, this was, that was damaged, that we would hope in terms of covering the cost of replacing. But this work was probably done the next summer. And it would be a bit, so it wouldn't be like, I don't think that we would be asking the board to approve it. We gave work to certain people, we have, we have certain contractors that they come and now to get this. It was very hard to do that. But it was only on an emergency basis. At this point on, I don't know that anything, we don't expect anything on urgency. But there is a lot more damage that will be hopefully repaired and made for by insurance. For stores and for.
And I thought I gave you a lot of damage. I just think that this is not right, I go versus this, this was specifically for the immediate, making it safe for the children to start school. That's happened. There will not be for us to move into practice.
This is almost a little bit of like a retroactive approval, more degree at that time that it was an emergency situation that was existed. I know in the one emergency that said before, my three quarter bros says an emergency exists. I guess that's what I think, right? But there's not an emergency anymore. So, yeah, I don't know if there's a way to make that clear that this is kind of saying, we understood what was happening. We can prove what happened and actions to go all the time to resolve the situation of emergency, the emergency doesn't exist anymore. We could work with her getting help in this process. I think, I think that's why I'm here, my reading right to is that we wouldn't want to start this process again of saying, let's say the door is actually ten, twenty, twenty-one, whatever, without having to know, saying, yes, we are in an emergency situation. Is that, what's the?
I think what we initially planned for this, according to the Sunday team, is we probably only want to, as I was trying, construction, we haven't been, I suppose, um, the immediate emergency damage is being rectified to open the school and collaborate jointly with it. So I feel like we would trust all those. So it's not perfect, right? It's not current at the right time, I think, for emergency. So we met up, I started, see if we had three moments, we did have expenses, we know.
And I would look at that being, Talon would have indicated that if you didn't have some type of that data, like I think of not having resolutions to have some kind of and data is going to be the cause of, of emergency. As some, it's a little more dicey, you know, high edge and the whole sort of thing. We might think that should have that if the emergency situation is through September first, whatever the date of paper is going pretty good for you to pump, that would have been.
So a couple of points. One is, thank you again to everyone involved in very vast discussions in the tour partners, the go-kart insurance company, our contractors, we're taking on it, it's all one time. Excellent. All right. Regarding this, which is the motion, I don't think that it is as necessary, but it was more of a, you must propose it, take a vote on it, depending on what you oppose this. Let's move to you. Okay. From governance, do you think that just means we can start the process of this discussion again about what the parameters are and how this knowledge is being financed for?
Yeah. And then we can do this again, we'll obviously make some changes to this. This is standard, we have world wide protection board, the district, then we can buy us, acquire us, and stuff like that. So that would be the situation again, you know, for the revised resolutions.
I, I, there's one question I have then is, is there, if it's not this resolution, if there's some resolution of this board should make, regarding, I would say that you work that was done, this resolution, this grant for action, or that's completed at this point, that was an emergency for it. Is there some resolution that this board may make that that is a deal that we pray that?
If you're not in danger of any sort of action, I don't think so.
We think the part of talking is starting to see if there's what kind of changes that we made. It's just a signify that it is all retroactive. The resolution itself indicates that it did flood damage, that could be an emergency work. At least we down that agree that this kind of move point that most emergency work is, has been completed. So we can talk to the district, if there's a revised resolution.
I would even want to put the district, I don't think there's ever been from action on companies that could have done this work, if it had to be out there, if we aren't right in that sense, it's less an emergency. That's why we didn't follow certain procedures in one way.
Yeah, not a good, I, I appreciate that. So we'll, we'll follow up when we talk in turn about that.
But the, the intent is that we're maybe, we'll go through the normal things, the expenses that we did have that were ours or not, each of the charges, we'll see those costs, those are normal, right?
Yeah, we've indicated on all the work that needs to be done, it's flood related, it depends on the rugs, bookshelves, carpeting, flooring, a lot of tons of expenses needed for it. So that's the work that we performed, that we will deliver in all those approvals. We're deeply involved in that, we've stretched it, which we'll provide and we're done. We should have recorded more damage purchases and things like that. So the stretch that we have is for the trans purposes. We're here to plan and everything from Seymour's actual work to work with so we have, so we're here to plan, every other option, every other box. So we're happy that it's, you know, easy from the church's perspective, we're going to call something. I told the right of the nation as far as the damage report.
Maybe the question that does help people make a sense of life, I have a question. This is clear that we all, it's a separate, other than that, I'm very open.
So going forward, you want to see flood related expenses, something like that, tell us.
Anyways, one item is just transparency, the district, that, you know, the budget standpoint, we may have been doing a great job of, you know, managing our finances, that there's some expenses that we really brought up, you know, anyone's control. I'm sharing that addition on a quick.
All these conversations to give us, we have, government, to follow, then into application and all that. So all of those. All right, we have an issue in September one week day. Do you resolve that I'm licensed by the Department of Education approves the resolution authorizing superintendent and mortgage financing operations? Oh, sorry. Do you resolve that I'm licensed by the Department of Education approves the change in order of education meeting on Tuesday, September nineteen, Tuesday, September twenty-six, thousand seventeen? Any other questions on this item?
I just want to share why. Eric, I'm glad that you sat in. We didn't have a meeting as first, so this is our, we have to publish the budget for thirty days and also kind of, we were, so that means that thirty days each day will be bigger than what we wish to get. So we're going to have here at the time that I'm seeing that it's a thirty day timer for that one.
So maybe it would be important to have a more.
My, sorry, one thing I was just speaking of is that I have a brother that's on, this is a community.
So I'm going to. All right, any other questions?
You know?
Yes.
Help?
Yes.
Yes sir, yes. Candela?
Yes.
Water?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so this is here's the lady. Whereas Illinois school can provide as a ten, under us, the board to provide us one public period prior to the final action of the budget. Whereas most of the public period has been published and welcome to figure out thirty days prior to the conference. Therefore, the resolved diamond list of District 4 of Education approved two thousand seventeen, eighteen tentative budget as presented in September two, September two thousand sixteen. And seven and have to make the public period of two thousand seventeen, eighteen budget. How much question on the side?
Was there anything, any notes in the budget related to flood expenditures? Anything was to have noted that I didn't think about? I didn't particularly change since the original, because it was a better course of thoughts for as far as the final budget, we have to go to what offset a really regular expense. I'll be happy on that. Just it will be a little bit extra to build the ground, scan the projects.
Yeah, I understand that that the year, but it's not something that we're able to be able to speak through about that, but no question.
No, that's a big challenge, I appreciate it. Really, the only change to last time was in fact we're moving public period into twenty-six. And at that point, I gave a presentation last year. So all the presentations were called on them. Don't be worried.
So to that, we really be evident to public that the budget, what expenses are relevant and related to that, the...
Well, there's an item as far as requiring the revenue, one point four million. And that's spent here as we prepare about the seminar activity for this year. We'll linger the following year as far as the early budget. So...
Hopefully, we're not getting over that. Well, in the more like, right, we're going to be two phases?
Correct, but it'll be over this, this, this year. Yeah. So, yeah, we're two-faced for this eight months and then half of that. So, yeah, we'll realize the entire revenue. But, yeah, as far as the sessions, we're planning, spending as much this year, two-faced and tight. We like to like two, two-faced approach.
So is it the budget that makes not evident, which budget, like I was, are rather than not?
I can include this part of the presentation though. This is the second, this is the water suspension, sure, you guys, a long time. So we have to include that on some slide.
And something is supposed to communicate that would be interesting.
Yeah, absolutely. So we'll have some more information as far as construction, we can figure if we could going forward, or we start developing and find change in that budget. So you should be, we have a bit of a final budget, not change, we'll have some more detailed information. And we're going to be overly transparent with public as far as on our website, what projects we're doing and that timeline. So we're going to check this out a lot, where we're at and...
Other than these questions? This is not, this stuff is not to improve the budget. What we're doing is intend the budget instead of anything. Actually, that's what we're doing.
Correct. And to give us a, close investment.
Any other questions? Maybe a motion to approve?
Water?
Yes.
Candelas?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Oh, yes. Chancellor, yes. Candelas?
Yes.
Right, next item of the meeting day list are new hires and resignations. The resolved diamond list of District 4 of Education steps towards personal access to business agenda. This includes six new hires that are certified or classified new hires for resignations. Four thousand seventeen reservation dates. How much question on the side? This makes us all fully staffed. And then we'll mix that to this one.
You know, fully staffed.
I'm sorry, I was just waiting. Yes. All right, any other questions? Motion to approve please.
Chancellor, yes. Bill?
Yes.
Oh, yes. Candelas?
Yes.
Water?
Yes.
Candelas?
Yes.
All right. The last item in our business agenda has to do with the release of the session minutes. The motion to postpone the April one to December fifth, two thousand seventeen, the release of the session minutes, renewing the session and following the second, two thousand seventeen. The motion to release all those session minutes from the morning of January and July, two thousand seventeen, the list for second session, this is January seventeen, February seven, February twenty-first, March seven, March twenty-first, April four, April eighteen, May fifth, or second, uh, May sixteenth, May twenty-fifth, June sixth, June twenty-eighth, and June eighteen. July two, May two. So does it make sense to do this before we have a review of the session? This is either it's just a, and this year we're not taking action. I'm all right with it. I have an action. Okay, so this is for action. As the next video, are there any comments or questions to start now? That is our business agenda. Next step is more discussion. If you know what's important.
I'd like to share to me this interesting second part of the slideshow. We should use our state, our markets to data online. Once again, Mr. Condon, Mr. Cass, for joining us on our back to school broadcast. But our day this year was a rebankers market. As you can see, a lot of our staff, the sixth grade, excuse me, the West Oak London team, put together a lot of argument for, um, people in costume. And the pink lady, she's like laying with him. And then I can still show with his, I don't know how you described it, Chris, but I can't, I can't reiterate the written stuff. The step we, Rick James needs to... So it was a great day. It was wonderful to give back. The attribute to be later in the morning, we have speaker, we go over our district goals and priorities. And then we have our speaker, Katie Assel from District fifty-nine. She is the director of social and emotional learning. And we asked her to go back for our next two, two days, we do home sessions based on teaching feedback and education head years. We were just reading, like, during classroom for your first couple of days in school and how you carry that around here, just making kids feel that they're safe and they feel liked and respected and valued. So she just got her sense of, but this was a great place to have a day, that they had lunch and then they come out to their classrooms and support and also get some great room for our meetings. The next thing we can, what early is just some updates and changes because of field bridge. I'm going to save the time. I just want for people we shared with staff and haven't had a chance to walk around the buildings. They, this is fair given, and the top right corner is that air conditioning is provided in tons out of ten classrooms. And the top picture is a rendition of the gym. So that is the gym what it's going to look like. We're about eighty percent there, is there today, and about halfway to four is playing paintings like that, doors like that. These boards are part of the, the flooring. And the fair given library is the bottom right hand corner. And it is all painted and the carpet is all in, they have lighting. First year's games, but they're not thirsty. So, um, shall I, shall I, I think we're still on the way of this to the tables and stuff. So it's temporary. So that's kind of what the vision of what fair given is. So if you notice the three colors, we're keeping the same as your theme of ten, twelve colors. But the turquoise, the jetta, and the yellow are going to be the fair given accent colors.
I'll say that.
Oh, yes. So, yeah, it's, I watched, we're in this, we, if you remember, it used to be tulips. So the library was a lot smaller. And then behind the library, so towards the back, where the second door is that second turquoise corridor, if you're looking from here, was the psychologist's office. And so just due to COVID, we had to take the wall down from the library. Julian, not the different, who were psychologists who we were testing in. So it gained about a third of the space, third more of the space, I should say. So it's only nice to have that all the time. And White was working with, so the pole is in the middle, building circulation, that's a rapid. So we can have the library and have a face to see the, um, the learning. That's what I'm hearing. And he's working. So Julian is like, I don't think.
Uh, no, we were, we were, it was traumatic. It was a really hard day. And thanks to Kurt who stuck up and helped, uh, and we had great assistance from the city. I would have been more pleased with, um, for a stage. But now that the time's over, we're kind of truly excited about what's happening. But it's new facilities, so.
Yeah, it's definitely great because Jen's been outside and they combined with the music classes. So she has a very wonderful, and Mrs. Hunt is reporting out in the classroom, a thousand hits. So she's a great, interesting person.
The teachers have been amazing. There is not many complaints at all. Everyone is just adjusted and impressive and they can take their pick. So excited for what will go on, but I don't think, even though, um, people are sharing questions to base a little bit of old libraries that I'm reading, we're in right now. So people have been boozled a little bit on the home, but they can now be back there.
Thank you. Kurt had eight air conditioners, he had a decent staff. He's like, that's better. And he's got a staff bathroom right on it, right outside his office. He, Kurt's just been sharing some walls because he's overseeing a lot of the building projects. So he doesn't feel like he's handling a lot of the building projects. But we...
The crown's old.
Yeah. But diamond like this again is true. Anyways, I do, um, L C B project, I've started them all, so that's got the announcements of the day. So I saw them running, so it's a great way to welcome kids and have them look to see the day. And then lastly, I've also done many, I guess, okay, we've already seen this, but when you pull in, there's great legs evening, that just gives building such a warm touch on the community as well as all our stand found. Something updated, your in, in small gym right now, it's been painted, it's up this weekend. We have some flights, um, so we've got some lighting features of the different, um, L C D. L E, L E things. L C D was what, thirty to me. Um, and the paint color, so if you look, the three X met color for Westo are kind of the apple, the, what do you call it, first, ox, ox, and the yellow. But then the very next, we like to call it burgundy, but former low, former low. Like, it was called an axa. And it's very nice and boring. So we did a great job. This is going to be the prototype that we're going to be based on the, and staff and teachers that they like, that they like the view, that they like the colors, they like the flooring. And just gave them a place and, um, former woke and it's like, as I've heard. So hopefully we'll see that as I go forward for our district school. So we're really pleased, we're pleased with our partners, we're pleased with Seymour, pleased with the entire leadership team because they've been loving me on. And I shared this at institute day, um, each level felt all this was going on, hiring, recruiting, staff, representatives, stuff, doing professional development, carrying on this on the school. And especially in that routine. So we didn't miss the meeting, all this stuff going on. And we still have what I was hoping to search for on the end. We started out the day spark like on August fourteenth, so I'm very proud of that. So thank you, the leadership team, for making more than we can find short.
So I just want to share, perhaps some of this speaker that you had, but there are probably other things that we started, so I'm, but I have an eighth grader, and my eighth grader says that the teachers are geared up and positive and use, he said, the teacher's attention. And he's very excited, so whatever is different, it's important. Here to give this from, to just be honest. We're trying to start. There you go. It's different. Okay, uh, speaking of, Merle and Taylor?
Ox, no, Ben, why?
Burgundy.
Burgundy. Is your burgundy and more low.
We have a new coordinator, Mr. Boyer. And he's on the side of the user, but we will bring him on board. We can all, he's showing up and he's scared of the... Any other questions? Okay, no, more requests? Some notices, communications? You can hear that you want to speak about?
Y'all, okay, it's just, um, you requested the ability to request that also. We include that in the I S bulletin as well as the conference information for the, um, for the conference, so if you're anybody who'd like to sign up. Not only teaching is going, um, there may be in the safety center, which is a free conference. But that's just information. If you're interested in going, just please let Daisy know. I can help. I can help you shout out to get even, and like, just the big campus, probably earlier because those demonstrations are...
So for those of you who weren't going to the board, the conference in the middle number is a large, date-wide, very well-attended conference. Some people send one more question for the number, some send none. Uh, and it is definitely worthwhile, and we've had a required training because that's more training than the rest of us had at this point in our tenure. But I encourage especially the board members to go explore the issue of, any board member. And the dates are usually again before Thanksgiving, one hundred and seventy. So I encourage you to look at the slide and just get in. And the, the district except for the few which is usually the other one, the two rounds. I believe it's four sixty-five has increased to, um, five hundred. Okay, anything else from...
I just want to say, I just want to say, if you guys want to click on the Daily Herald article, even just seeing how my practice has been made, and just went through and clicked, but that is her standing in the west oak hallway when they done the floors. And then I think that was just her, me, the slide. So unless I'm up, that's what they did to that, that hallway. I think he was spinning right there, right? It's not like...
That was just past the district club door on the right. Is that what you, is that fifty-three there with the... Yeah, so I was just beyond it. With an onstage podium whatsoever.
You just, this is our club.
I have to be on the building.
It is pretty amazing how much this takes place, given that we have a local issue and a lot of other county and area, region has that problem issues. And contractors are really pushing on high demand. So it's pretty amazing, right, to make a partnership. All right, any other notices, communications? At this time, we're open to the floor for any public comments and objections for other items. Having no public comments, we have others?
So these you just saw at the carrier, which from our August first meeting, um, that we were able to present to, um, there's a substantial update that Mr. Walker has put together, which is sort of review of essential programs, and that's how we're shooting this. We did that, we tested it all through post-test. We have a usability update, it's on our district website. At least you can't get a really nice job and putting in just some time and information to give the community. And as Mr. Ryder referred to earlier, we are going to be a lot transparent, um, giving more, excuse me, more as a community, information on our facility projects. So that's one of our goals. We stand out as the district leadership team today and together have the five district halls and private space for the upcoming year. And one of them is to provide a detailed five year facility plan. fiber story, plans of the projects, the timeline of the budget, but then also making those accessible to the community, the parent, and user, correct the format. So, um, the district website is a great start for that. And then Mr. Dr. Wong, um, professional names, too, that's the first group of August. So we get, we stand on, which will, that's just over here, all portions that teachers are involved with. And then the last one is the regional innovation, board, and associations, over from the county division game. So the two dates are included in your flyer, so just to make sure you have all that information.
Will we hear more of this summer school rotation, please?
If you'd like, if you want to jump out now, of course, it's just, I'm all, um, I don't know if you're prepared, or if you're just that more formal, for the year that we have in September.
There's nothing more formal that I would give or provide, but as you can see, I think we had a successive summer program with some changes, and we're rolling that with the extended opportunities. I'd like to point out that it's a, we took a lot of coordination efforts among people, Dr. Fredricks, Mr. Rogers, Kim Fetter, Bus Company, um, you know, Mr. Bob, who is here. I think it's real important to understand that, uh, it's not just helping the space and do it. And so we learned a lot, and, uh, the good thing was is that there is a need for, um, enrichment achievement as well as intervention remediation, if you will. We had STEM, children are interested in STEM and STEAM. We had a foreign language enrichment, foreign language intervention. We have remedial, I don't like the word remedial, we had inter-intervention level reading and that. Uh, we did blended approaches, digital resources, small group, just, just a very nice different process. But we, we recognize that we tried very hard to make it like a summer camp and an educational setting. And that's just not happening, because we're unable to provide clarity to all the community with transportation in the outlet. So what we want to do is to look and investigate, uh, like an intersection for six weeks. People actually may be here for about five or six hours. We didn't practice too much. We look well-rounded experience, not just three hours of reading and then we go home. We want to be to explore art, digital resources, coming again, physical education, provide lunch, et cetera. We're just thinking about that right now. But now we'll go to the data. Uh, when you take a look at the data, the purpose of the summer school is not really to push for a great amount of growth, it's to prevent that reverse slide, that aggression over time, because children are not engaged in a learning environment by school setting. So we had a big reason for the children who were here. We had the, the program that we've been using, which is Time One Plus. It starts off with pre-assessments, the teachers then do a blended approach, there's some digital materials, pan, books, there's writing, libraries, et cetera. And then over the course of the experience, the children are reading about each civilization's ethically level readiness. So you have Latin America, you have China, you have Cuba, you have home, and we have Central America. So each grade has a different culture or life or citizenship. And they do conversations, they read, they are dialoguing, they're building projects, again, very plentiful. In that event, we provided a thirty-minute, four-day-a-week map resource. Mr. Goldberg works as the map constructor, and he has small groups, works with that, it's digital. We utilize the Monebans this year, which is the model. It's free to get started, it costs, I think, ninety-nine dollars to be able to run the reports and generate. But it pre-assesses the children, builds a learning path, and then from there, the learning path is for the children more likely. And so the thirty minutes a day, four days a week, uh, mostly solid results in America, we have all positive growth, the reading very positive. So I think that we would like to continue with a summer program. Our, our population of students that have had a problem, uh, believe that we need to look at more of the interceptions, that they more, I, I would say more well-rounded approach, that we have the intensive intervention, we also have exploration, that we would have studies of interest, maybe, uh, expanding ancient civilizations. A lot of our children really enjoy it, because the different ancient ships, that they look at, such as Central America, they're fascinated with that. And then, uh, the biggest point is, get the information out of them before we do break, that we have a pretty good foundation, and a good justice, so we have to start thinking what is this day, and night, and all that, but at least to begin that, so parents can start planning. And so we probably be able to get ahead of the ball this, this time, or ahead of the herd, just because we, we have the foundation from this year.
So with the recommendations that you're making, are, are you still being your people to the same students, those same parents, or is it just a different one?
Well, that's where we have to get it out, and we, we need, we need to do both, to be honest with, with Yack, and we need to, we need a, an intervention for those children that are outside. When they come back in summer, from the summer, uh, just getting them into that school mode takes a while. Although our children have never been to school mode, we can have more of that in the summer, and they're seeking, they're thirsty for STEM and STEAM. It's going to take some coordination, and again, some coaching purposes, while we're at our best, to at least offer and staff it with our staff, and, and hopefully able to build a community from there.
So you are thinking about things like the STEAM, like the physics, or the logistics, all that sort of stuff?
Contributing that, yeah.
Doing things like the band, the, the language dimension. So the topics that you say, use for the structure.
We'll be structured differently, but then we also need to make, we have creative writing and, um, we're using, for children who don't make remedial reading, what we'd like to expand in complexity of reading, or creative writing, or doing some coding, you know, that we can fill their day with those courses, so that they're here, uh, and, and we're able to conduct it like, like a, an intersection, a full day. I'd say five or six hours, you know, normally it's seven. If we did five hours, you know, we might get even more students, and if they're, if they're only within our district.
And would they feel like it's, kind of, more of just the same, or would it be something else?
It'd probably be a lot of both, there'd be the, and again, it depends on students, right, and Misses D's. We have, we have, I think, under seventy, under some students that are mentioned reading. We know we have more children, we have children, more children than that leader. Uh, but, you know, we're growing, and we're trying to make it better. Having forty kids at Bandcamp, and different sessions of Spanish, foreign language, uh, for the door language, where they would be skewed this year, we'll be able to maybe tweak that and expand on that. So it sounds, I, I think it's a good message about our population to have a summer program, expand the program. I think it needs to be remedial, intervention, and expansion, extended learning, uh, creative learning. I think we need to like it, though, that we have some physical, we have some artistic, we have some liberal arts kind of stuff, we have the science, we have your, your STEAM, and then we have, uh, some of our skill-based, daily reading in that.
Just to be personally, certain amount of fun factor helps it sell, for some, from a parent's perspective, could it not, that we can force on the school?
Oh, absolutely. We try to have innovation living in the heart of district, uh, and that's where, you know, we have to, we have to try to do a different thing, even differently.
Um, yeah, and those organizations are different in how they operate in my mind, and I'm just saying, you guys are not, in one, part of two, I'm guessing.
I, I think it's, I think the author will go to the program, I think that's the first department, but yes, adding something different, something unique, very exploratory.
Right, some are themes, and some.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I'm just thinking.
Needle point, right.
Yeah, I think that's popular in this program, each year, I want to reference, because the presence, to the bigger district, that they basically run the, run the, they're talking about.
Um, I haven't got any inquiry over there, but I will be reaching out.
Yeah, their, their website is really good, and they'll outline some of the classes that, and they operate from New York and through East Great, but it's, it's a mix of , sort of, Texas, um, classes that all have an academic that, there's a lot of ones in there, too, you know, there's, you know, science association, like, you know, your STEM, your car, your writing.
Sounds like a very good place to have a springboard.
Yeah, I mentioned that, and I think it's a good, it's nice.
Absolutely, thank you for that. I reached up to seventy-five, ninety-six, a lot of districts don't join, so I'll, I'll ask you to the harbor one more. Do you care?
It's really popular, so.
I'll have to do this. Yeah.
Anything else on that? Anything else on this list? Anything else on the others list that you want to talk, ask, question about? Others?
Not a lot.
Any other others?
Sorry, other? Um, first of all, uh, as you know, the, 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 the , you know, three actors, uh, against, uh, variances to allow a, a shooting range of guns to be put outside of this one, or five, or three. Um, it's now, that's just in the, it's going in front of the, Monday line, uh, Monday Village, or the, the trustees on Monday, and, uh, it looks like they're going to, somewhere in the neighborhood, the pyramid, uh, just giving, uh, the, the, the communities are going to, uh, to express their, their preference that, um, that they don't operate that school in that particular location. Um, the, the second is, I know that there is, I know that a community brought up, brought in our ratings, school ratings on Zillow throughout today, and, uh, this, I, I just went on, I did more of those, yeah, about today, very much, I just want to hear the community real, real answer.
How old's your, your favorite?
Uh, I'm in the eight, less than six.
Can we call them?
It's, uh, basically, and I'm not having, I'm not.
Yeah, I did, I did, I was talking, I was, I, 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 I think initially we ran a four, and we gave him, that's two weeks ago, and he sent all of the information, he said, "They have it, and they open it, and we'll send it for the term, or the update, and it will be up," so I believe that's, thank you.
Okay, that's it, we're done.
And I thought I'd end for a teen initiative. Okay, and then where else? I just have one last thing, right through all, is what we shared at the school, like, of the ones that we were, the rest of the holders, so, um, there's information in our angle, mostly, um, have children in the district, so you receive a lot of this information, so we'd like to, um, select whatever, Campbell, Magg, and to capture any, is, we'll take them from you, but we just wanted you to see, uh, save them out of, at school night, and patients at school, to receive, um, pictures we have in the right-hand side, um, and specific information related to these schools. And then, um, off of your various related, uh, channels, so you can keep that on the end of that side, and you can tell them.
Uh, for your, for your, you serve from our. Tell them to make sure that you follow your.
And then, um, so I'm very kind for you, so that's your point about teachers being happier. One of our focuses is where it is, um, creating a happy environment, hopefully, and teachers and passing out for teachers, creating a happy learning environment. So teachers receive these, um, fifteen seconds, two days, two days, and then both leadership teams are doing activities around this, whether it's anything, it's a boat study, or student activities, of how to start seminars, TV's, or help with this, but this is a foundation of our, especially including the period of the personal, as well as the academic. So this is what you can copy that.
All right, and the other others?
Yes, don't put the eyes in the, the gap, because I don't know if everyone's in there, but most of us don't have kids at that, but that, that school is not the only. So I just thought of the first.
That school is not the only, the last, so. Yeah, actually.
What?
Actually, my kids came back saying that most of their was also at a higher level. And I don't really know that, the, 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 the directions on, yes, Mr. Walker sent out, um, what library explaining, and, and, together, just about, trying to explain, um, kind of, the restrictions and the reason behind the information, he goes about front wall, and also the kids got a note, saying that the classroom was not free, that their children were all talked to, so you got a lot of information.
Really, I hope it's very clear. The one thing I know, one of the problems is confusion and how it roll off, because it's very, very important, and that's what we did, and also we made sure that, um, so that, I mean, to, 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 not to pay, not to, not to, not to, but also process the question, um, so, we'll give everything, like, your situation, which I'm quite good. And, 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 and,
and the other others? All right, at this time, the board is going to adjourn the secretary session, the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, forms, and discuss what's, is, 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 is in the district, or the council, but there's, we're in there just wanting to, my gosh, it's priorities, the council, the district, and, 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 and,